Good morning and welcome to the October 24, 2023 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. If you can, please rise for the pledge. we will move on to staff announcements. This is time for county staff to provide updates of up-counding county events that may be of interest to the public. And I see we have Stan Moore. We'll start with you and then we'll go to Kathy. Or unless you're together. You're a teen?
Yes, she's back. An additional member. Good morning, Board. Stan Moore from IT and Kathy Galino from Economic Development. Quick update on the status of broadband as we move along in the journey here. And we will be coming back sometime in the near future with a more detailed update. We wanted to let you know that as of last week and Monday of this week, the CPUC has been reviewing applications that have been turned in. The process to turn in applications is completed. And for the first time, we are now able to get to information from all of the applicants for Calaveras County and for the whole state for that matter. Within Calaveras County, Golden State Connect put in a one large project, roughly $32 million. And then there were two projects for the county that were submitted by AT&amp;T and one by Comcast. We're going through and reviewing this information, learning a great deal about it right now. We'll come back with more information. We also want to let the Board know and the public know, and we will post something on this on the county website, that CPUC has opened up an objection process that lasts for 28 days. And we'll provide some information in terms of what that entails. For the most part, objections would be if someone looks at what was submitted and says, "The information that was submitted is incorrect." It's not an objection to say, "Well, I should be included in this first phase of the project." It's more about what was submitted is incorrect. We want to post that on the website just so that folks know that that objection period is open and what they could do if they're interested in finding more information. We'll be back at a subsequent board meeting and provide some additional information. So that's it on broadband. Thank you.
Other exciting news, we are going to be creating a broadband webpage, Calaveras County-specific, to talk about and show the community the various projects that we have going through the federal funding account for the last mile. So it'll be very exciting. IT is helping with that. Just a couple other quick updates if I could. We attended, Susan Tomasic and I, attended the San Andreas kind of beautification open house that was this weekend. It was great. We got to talk to a lot of businesses, new businesses that are opening in San Andreas. If you have the chance, go down, check it out. This is a grassroots effort to beautify this historic area. The museum was open. Nielsen Park was open. We talked to a bunch of folks. It was great. And then we went over to the International Observe the Moon Night, which was at the library at San Andreas. That was great. There was about 300 kids and parents and games and rocket launches, and it was really great. Thanks.
Any other staff announcements? In the room? Online? No?
No, there isn't online.
Okay. We will go on to the next item, which is general public comments. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during a public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So it's open public comments. I see Bonnie's here.
Good morning. Good morning, folks. Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. And I noticed there's a couple of agenda items concerning Double Springs later, but I hope I last through that. Today, I want to talk about Double Springs and why you people are all here. 175 years ago, some really progressive people lived on Double Springs Road, and they said, "Hey, we want to be a county in California." So they got some money together, got some signatures, rode over to San Francisco, got themselves registered, certified, bona fide, and here we are, a county. They took their papers to Double Springs, set up a museum, not a museum, a courthouse, set up a jail and other services needed, like maybe a hanging tree. Never got to use it, though, because some vomits from Mulcahy come on over, stole our archives, took them away. We weren't warlike people. We let them take it. We weren't going to fight them. They come sneaking over and took them. So anyway, that's why you guys are here, because people on Double Springs took the initiative way back then, got themselves together and pulled it off. Double Springs, where I was born, only been there 49 years, but feel like it's home. Want to do what I can to preserve it. Lot of memories, lot of changes. When I first come, you know, there was a cart, a pony cart, that come down the road with an old man and an old lady, sold vegetables off the back, right down the road. Can't do that now. Talk about it later, I hope, if I last. Anyway, Double Springs is the root. Oh, it had encompassed Amador, Calaveras, Twalomee, Alpine. It was a big county. We took on a lot, had to give up a lot. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, my name is Tom Watson. My wife and I own a home in Arnold, and we love Arnold. And Calaveras County has been a wonderful place for us. The events in Paradise in 2018 and the events against Lahaina this summer affected me deeply. Recently, the city of Paradise installed early warning sirens as part of their evacuation plan. Seventy-five percent of that cost was funded by a FEMA grant. I assume that the remainder, 25%, came from local and private sources. I've reached out to the mayor of Paradise and asked him how that was done. I've not heard back yet. Other Californian municipalities have also recently added siren systems. A short list includes Santa Rosa, Sonoma County, Beverly Hills, Newport Beach, Laguna Beach, Berkeley, Deerwood Point, Minot Park, Nanaboo, and Mill Valley. I'm sure there's others. Last week, Twalomee County added a siren system, I've learned. Calaveras already has an emergency alert system that pushes emails, texts, and cell and phone calls out to residents in the county. This works for those that have the technology and those who'd also have opted in to receive the notifications. Lahaina had a push system and a siren system, but unfortunately, their system was never activated. On September 3 of this year, The New York Times reported, quote, "As a fire burned through the residential neighborhood of Lahaina, emergency measures sent out evacuation alerts that would glare on the cell phones of anyone near the place. Residents reported that cellphone coverage was spotty that day as the town dealt with power outages and high winds. Cellphone service in the area was largely dependent upon overhead fiber lines, and as the fire spread, those lines were damaged." Might a fire coupled with high winds also knock out power to homes and cell towers in our county? Wherever Karen Henry was threatened in California, the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department found that it could not send out wireless evacuation alerts to the community. The county cited a breakdown in the connection to the wireless alert system. This was a system that was managed by the federal government, apparently. This is the same system that, on October 4, sent out a nationwide test warning. I've never received my test alert yet. Perhaps it will come. In my opinion, sirens would provide a degree of redundancy that would supplement and complement the existing systems in place. Sirens have been used for hundreds of years because they're simple, reliable, and they are universally understood. So today, if it's not already been done, I'd like to propose that the Board launch a feasibility study into-
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
Good morning, Terry.
Morning, Terry.
I'm looking at, this is fabulous, to help our people of our county. Also, Community Chair and Senator of California State. We will be having a meeting Thursday at 5:40 down by Springs at Roundtable. If anybody would like to come in here, we are gathering close to the finish line. Documentation is provided to Congress. We are following the Constitution, and it's happening. And Board Supervisors of every county ought to be so grateful because for once you get to listen to your people instead of the state. You get to be sovereign. You feel belong, you go back to the small government that our forefathers wanted. I want to have a quick to read a part of this because it's fabulous words, and I don't remember if you all know who Dennis Smoot is or was. This was written in 1966, and I think it is so relevant to the times that we live in now. The title of it is "A Constitutional Republic and a Democracy." A democracy is a political system in which the people periodically, by majority vote at the polls, select their rulers. The states have absolute power to make whatever laws they please by majority vote on themselves. In a constitutional republic, the people also, by majority vote at the polls, select rulers, can make laws by majority vote on themselves, but the rulers cannot make laws they please because our constitution severely restricts their lawmaking power. The idea of a democracy is universal equality. The idea of a constitutional republic is individualism at the beginning. Isn't that what we want? Subversion of language. In this century, great starts have been made toward the goal of subverting a republic and transforming it into a democracy. One tactic, other subversors, is subversion of language. By calling the United States a democracy until people thoughtlessly accept the means of term totalitarianists have obscured the principles of government. Make the following passage from an article written by C.L. Selzberger and distributed by The New York Times News Service, March 3, 1966. "While the United States, but another leading democracy, in recent years has seen perceptible growth in executive authority. On Moritier Line Court, a French intellectual contains in his book, The Coming of Caesar's, that society becomes more equalitarian, it tends increasingly to concentrate absolute power in advance of one single ruler. Caesarism does not breed a seizure of power through revolution, is not based on a specific doctrine or philosophy, it is essentially pragmatic and unfounded theoretical. It is a slow, often central, unconscious development that ends in a voluntary surrender of free people escaping from freedom to an autocratic master." Something we need to be thinking about as we look at what's going on. Thank you so much.
Any other public comments? In the room? See none in the room? Are there any online? No? All right. We will move on to the next agenda item. That's the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any Board members who remove anything from the consents? See none? Is there any staff member? Mr. Packard.
Good morning. I'd like to move item 13 to the next meeting, please.
To the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Is this completely off the consent?
Thank you.
Any other staff member have an item on consent? Any online?
There are no online requests.
Okay. Since none was pulled other than one to be pulled on to the next meeting, bring it back to the Board. Open for a motion for the consent. Motion by Supervisor Garamendi.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Pollendorf. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Pouse. Passes 5-0. At this time, I'm going to take a moment. We have someone from Resource Connection here. Come on up. We just had an item on the consent agenda that we approved from each one of our discretionary funds that we have now. We never used to have them. We did a long time ago, and then a lot of things happened. So each supervisor put in money into a pool for the Resource Connection to offer a check for the holidays to feed the people that are in need.
May I just say, on behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff and all of your residents of Calaveras County that you serve, we are so grateful for this. We are able to purchase $9 worth of food for every dollar that we get.
Well, that's awesome.
And with increased food costs and transportation costs, this is going to make a significant difference to us and our ability to help families of Calaveras County going into the holidays. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We will move on to the regular agenda. Item number 16 is an informational item from Human Resources to receive an update from Stacy Wintle with Evergreen Solutions LLC on the status of the comprehensive classification and compensation studies being conducted for the county.
We do have a presentation.
You have a presentation? Do you want to come in? So why don't we take a couple minutes break for you guys to get set up? We'll take a five-minute break. Stacy and Judy, you guys are on.
Okay, good morning, Chair Tofanelli, members of the Board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. And we are very happy to be here today to give you an update and the status of our comprehensive countywide classification and compensation study. I have Stacy Wintle here, who we have been working with since the beginning, and she has a presentation for you.
There it is. Well, good morning. Thank you for having me here today. We have a presentation that we'll walk through today to give you an update on where we're at with your current classification and compensation study. Any questions along the way? Please feel free to ask or hold them to the end, either whichever way you prefer. So this presentation is going to be an overview, a little background on who we are, what your goals of the project are, your project timelines, and then next steps. Evergreen Solutions, just a little bit of background, we are a public sector consulting firm. That's where 99% of the work that we do is. And actually, most of our employees were public sector employees, myself included. We've worked in 47 states, missing the Dakotas and Hawaii, I think. But we've worked coast to coast in a lot of different states on classification, compensation, staffing studies. We've done organizational reviews, efficiency studies. So things that really help the public sector operate and run like it needs to. Our expertise is in local government, school districts, higher education, state agencies as well. And we've done some other nonprofit and kind of this quasi-governmental organizations. Now, before we jump into the rest of the presentation, just a little purpose slide here. What is a classification and compensation study? What is it for? Why do organizations want to take them on? And primarily, it's because of your staff. It's your people. Your people are your greatest resource, most valuable resource that you have as an organization. And when you want to take on a classification and compensation study, it's going to be because you've got a concern that your compensation maybe is not fair? Is there inconsistencies internally? Have some of the different departments drifted from each other in how they're valuing very comparable positions? Employees with different, will have different duties within the same job title. So that's another issue where we often find that there's some drift, I call it, in an organization. And then also, you find that you don't necessarily have the levels that are what you need to serve you as you've kind of grown. They're not competitive with the market. You're having some challenges recruiting and retaining those people. Okay? So that's why people take on a class and comp. And that's what we're doing here with you, is we are looking at your internal structure. We're looking to see how you're organized right now from a classification standpoint. We're looking at your classifications across all the different departments. We're looking for any inequities internally, based on what the classifications do, the level they work out within the organization, and then how they are situated within your organization. And then we're looking externally at the market to see if you're competitive within your market. Are you leading the market? Are you lagging? Are you at a market average? So we're going to look externally and find that out for you. And then bring all that data in together to give you recommendations. Recommendations on a structure, recommendations on a pay schedule, updates that might be needed. And want to give you a plan at the end of this, where it's a plan that fits your needs now, it's adaptable, it's going to grow with you, so you don't have to redo this in another year. I'm going to give you some flexibility there. And then after 25-plus years myself in the public sector, I want it to be financially, it's feasible. It's got to be fiscally responsible, something that you can afford on into years two and Expectations with this is not a staffing study. I'm not looking at, do you have the right number of staff members to get the job done? Do you have more staff members here and not enough here? So we're not doing that. And it's a hold harmless approach, right? So there is no guarantee of across-the-board salary increases, all right? Which means I'm looking at the market. I'm looking to see, is your salary schedule market competitive? Is it following best practices? And if not, here's your recommendations, all right? But it's not an across-the-board increase for every employee, okay? Don't expect, or please do expect, a full, comprehensive look with recommendations and a very transparent process. Lots of communication throughout. We actually have weekly meetings, so we stay engaged back and forth throughout the process. And we'll provide regular updates and then report draft chapters kind of as we go. Here's the project phases. Now, these are looking like distinct phases here, but they're not. There's a lot of overlap in how this works. But Phase 1, Summer 2023 Project Initiation, that's the kickoff of the project. Phase 2 is the market assessment, and we're actually, that process is underway right now, collecting a lot of that market data. Phase 3, we're looking on the classification assessment and your outreach. So this is where we're looking internally. We're talking to your folks. I'm here this week holding focus groups with staff. We're doing them both in person and virtually. And then Phase 4 at the end will be, it says Winter 2024, so that's January, February, that will be our wrap-up. And this will bring all the recommendations together for updates for your plan, your classification system, and those recommendations moving forward. So when we collect your data at the front end of that, it said, you know, that data collection under like the Phase 1, the kickoff there, what I'm looking at there is I'm looking at what we call your assessment of current conditions. What do we see right now with the system we have in place? What is its strengths? What are the weaknesses? What do we want to make sure to address during the course of the study? And what we found is, by and large, you're managing your current system by classifications. You don't really have a pay grade system where you cluster like-level positions within the same pay grades. And that way, you can manage that kind of equity across the board a lot, a lot better. And so you're managing 340-some-odd different individual classifications right now for all of your employees. So that's something that we know that we can help you find a little bit more concise way to manage that system. Your range spreads vary between 0 and 22%. So it's a little bit more narrow than we typically see, so that might be something that we want to take a look at and find some consistencies across those range spreads. Range spread is the distance between minimum to maximum of any given pay grade. So that total kind of earning potential across that classification. Several classifications had a single incumbent. So you had a single person in a single classification. There might be some opportunity there to collapse some of those. Those are some of the recommendations we might want to make. You had 100 pay grades or your classifications are either vacant or they're no longer being utilized. So that's something we want to take a look at. Are these vacancies that need to be filled? Or are these ones that you're not using anymore? They've kind of grown into something else. 34% of those employees were clustered in the first quartile of the pay grade. So if you take all those classifications and break their salaries up into quartiles, about 34% are in that first quartile. You had no indication of significant compression between supervisors and employees. When I looked at the supervisors and the direct reports, I think there was 24 total that they were making at or right above their employees, I mean their supervisor's salary. So considering the total number of positions that you have, 24 is not too bad. Current phase right now, as I mentioned before, employee outreach. This is where we're here this week doing the focus groups and supervisor-manager level interviews, both virtual and in person. Employee classification and compensation survey is also going to be administered this week, so that's going out to all employees. So even if they're not able to participate in a focus group, they can still participate in the survey and provide us some feedback on any classification and compensation concerns that they have for their position. We have a job assessment tool that will be released next week. The job assessment tool, it's a work factors, job factors survey. And what we're asking people is about their particular position. What level do you work at? Is your title correct? If not, what should that title be? Give some input there. Does what you do match what's on your job description? If not, tell us. And what level of complexity is your position? What leadership level? How much decision-making authority do you have? What education is required to do your job? Those types of questions will help us better understand what each of your positions are actually doing. And then based on that, we'll help you create a hierarchy of all your classifications. Market data collection is ongoing. Hope to have that wrapped up here pretty soon. I do have an update here for you to give you an idea of where we're at right now, what we're seeing with your market data. These are your market targets. We selected these targets as a collaborative approach. These are peers of either similar size or close proximity, similar services offered as a public sector organization. So that's your peer list there. They are in that table. All responses are adjusted for cost of living differentials. So if any one of these peers is at a different cost of living than yours, then we bring it to your cost of living. So we don't either over or undervalue any of those market data points. We have 125 classifications that we're using as benchmarks. So those are the ones that we're comparing at these different peer organizations to better understand where you are in the market. And we match those classifications at about 70% rate of the responsibilities. Because a title for a title doesn't always match. So we're looking to make sure at the job description level, they fundamentally match each other in what they do. This is what we're seeing right now for your market. These are tentative numbers. They may change a little bit, so don't hold me to these numbers quite yet, but this gives you an idea of what we're seeing in the market right now. So if you look at that midpoint, which is where I tend to focus in, that tells me right there, you're about 13% behind the market with your salary ranges. And I'm not talking any individual salary, I'm talking about the ranges from minimum to max. So that's what we're seeing initially right now. Got a few peers that have promised us some data this week, so I'm hoping to get that number kind of short up here pretty soon. The current match count is 6.7 on average. So that means on average, for all of those classifications we took to market, I have almost seven responses for every single one of them. Because not every peer is going to have the exact same positions you do. Some of them I know have, gosh, 11, 15, 16 responses. So I've got really good data to utilize. We could be finishing that data through this next week, and then we'll finish that number up, and then we'll do every group. Next steps, finalize collection of the market data. So we'll be analyzing the results to calculate your market position. We're going to compile that benefits data. Got almost all of that in as well. We're going to evaluate those JET responses. So the JET that goes out next week to all employees, we will be open to all employees for about two or three weeks, to make sure everybody has an opportunity to respond. Once employees respond, we close it to employees, and we ask supervisors to review, to give us input. Do they agree or not? Is there extra information that they need to provide us? Okay? So supervisors have an opportunity to also give us that input. We're going to evaluate the responses. We read everything that everybody gives us, put all that information together, then meet with your project team here and say, okay, here's these initial findings. You give us some feedback. Do we like this system? Do we need to make any tweaks or changes? And then we'll update as needed. And then we'll develop that classification hierarchy, build out what we call your solution file, which is the hierarchy of classifications, as well as recommendations for your compensation structure, provide that final report. Be happy to come back out here and present those recommendations to you and do any other follow-up meetings as needed. And then we'll update your job descriptions at the end of this as well. So you'll have current job descriptions by the time we're done. And that is it. Is there any questions or anything you would like me to go back to?
Jack, you have a question?
Quick question. Thank you very much for the work. Does the, when you talk about salary compression, does that include overtime? Or is that base salaries?
We're looking at base salaries, because there's a lot of fluctuation in any overtime that might be needed during the course of a year. So we're looking at base salaries.
Thank you. Second question is to, does your study take into account pay raises in the current contracts? So where we are today versus San Joaquin, we've got pay raises through our contracts with the labor to increase every year. Other counties that are our peers may not.
Right.
So do you take a look at this over a span of time? Or is it just a snapshot? And does it take into account the fact that, you know, we've got these raises already fixed?
It's both. So I'm looking at a snapshot in time. Where are you at today compared to those peer organizations? But then we will look ahead to say, well, what would you be doing in a year from now? What does a step increase look like? What do the salary raises look like? What do your peers look like? Because even if, say, even if everybody is offering an increase in the next year, I want to make sure your plan is going to meet the needs of year two, right? So that way, you don't start off behind the market again if your salary increase is behind somebody else's.
Or ahead.
Or ahead, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, both.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stoffer?
With the questionnaires going out to employees and going through their duties to make sure it matches or they're equal job duties per job description, basically, desk audit, right? Seems like you're doing that after you're collecting a lot of the information on other counties. How does that come into analyzing those and moving forward? You know, it's, sometimes we would like to sort out those classifications per job duty prior to...
Prior to. We actually work the projects both ways. A lot of times, we will start off with the classification work first, and then clarify, and then go to market. We did flip it this time to get some initial numbers in, but I have all their data, so we'll fine-tune those adjustments if we find the classifications have drifted. So if we would need to align them differently, go back and update a market position, then we will.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comments on this item?
I'm also getting a taxpayer association. This is a very good job we've done. The scope of it seems to be, it can only go away. I want the people to have recognition. If I were, the extent of awards for good service, or perhaps public recognition for excellence in government, I think that this would have a positive effect on employee performance, and also have an effect on retaining employees. So perhaps, if this organization has approached employer recognition, it could, if you combine that with the recognition data, you'd have a pretty good idea of where to go. Thank you.
Is there public comments?
Why do you let people in here like me? I have a question or two. How much does this study cost the taxpayers of Calaveras? And will it be used for anything? I'm thinking of the Mintier-Harnish report, where we spent $1 million and never even found out what it said. So I'm just curious how much this is going to cost the taxpayers at this point. I don't have a question about the need for it, just how much it's going to cost us.
So the contract that we brought forward in July, the study is under $60,000 for the comprehensive study. The study is just under $60,000.
Any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. This was informational, so thank you very much for your presentation, and we'll look forward to seeing you again to update us.
Absolutely. I'm happy to come back out soon.
Take a couple minutes break. Item 21, they are actually in reverse. We have to do 21 before we go on to 20. So we will be doing item 21 first, and then going back to item 20. With that being said, we'll move on to item number 17. This is a resolution from Human Resources to approve a side letter agreement with Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association. For one, a one-time incentive and retention payment of $750 for permanent employees who meet the eligibility requirements as outlined in the agreement. And two, salary increases for the classification correctional COOK 1/2 dispatcher and senior dispatcher. The accompanying budget transfer required to forfeit's vote from the board. Judy?
Good morning, Chair Tofanelli, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. And I am bringing before you increases for positions within public safety, consistent with other increases we have recently brought forward. We are showing a very high vacancy rate within our correctional COOK series, and then also our dispatcher series. Right now, we have many counties around us that dispatchers are getting to critical levels, and we are trying to get ahead of that and be able to retain those that we have. We're also bringing forward the $750 retention incentive that we paid to other bargaining units at the end of last year, and we are just bringing that forward right now for CCPSEA. Now, those positions that have received recent increases are not eligible for the $750, so there are a group that will not be receiving it.
Is there any board questions? Seeing none, I'll open up the public. Is there public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move.
Motion by Supervisor Follendorf, second by Supervisor Garimendi.
Huberty.
Oh, excuse me, Huberty.
We look alike.
Okay, fine, we'll move on. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by zero.
Thank you.
So when you put the names up, Stacy, I guess it doesn't matter where you... They both look alike. All right, we'll move on to action item 18. Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, select one member of the Board of Supervisors to act as a 2024 CSAC representative, and one member to act as the alternate for the CSAC Association, the year beginning November 13, 2023. It's from the clerk, but she isn't here to present the item, so we have a discussion, an open discussion with the board, who would like to be the alternate, who would like to be the second alternate.
Well, I think this came up because I'm not going to be there, so those of you that are going to be going to the meeting, we needed to make sure that there was a backup or alternate at this conference. So with the voting and everything going on, just as a, so you're a primary, but we need a backup to me since I'm not going.
I'd be willing to continue the primary. That's not on, you will be it.
Well, that's what we're voting on right now.
So most of it was for this conference coming up, to give somebody else, the delegation, also voting ability, should you need to need it for some reason.
Supervisor Huberty?
Well, the, I mean, overall, that's all of our decision, but there's also an alternate opportunity to fill in for him, so, if that's what people would like.
I'll step in as the alternate, if that's all right.
You'll be the second alternate. She's not going to be there, that's why we're doing this, so I can go and be the second alternate. Primary thing.
If that's what people want.
Covering our bases.
Everybody's saying they want to be primary, so you're the only one. Let's open up the public comment first. Is there any public comment on this item? Good morning.
Yes, I'm Ross. Let me share with members of the board, I will be bringing before the board in a couple of weeks, one of the suggestions I have about a lot I purchased about 20 years back here in this county. And it has taken 20 years.
That doesn't pertain to this item that's in front of us right now.
Yes. I will take only two more.
You can't speak about, you can only speak about this item. We've already passed public comment period. This is public comment period for this specific item. If you have something to say about this item, you're more than welcome to speak.
I'm sorry I missed it, because both my ears are locked up and I didn't hear you, I was sitting right there.
Well, we've already passed public comment period on other items that aren't on the agenda.
Would it be after the meeting, during, before the lunch break or something?
You're more than welcome to speak to me one-on-one, or either of the other...
Okay, I'll wait.
When we go on break, but you've passed public comment.
I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comments? If not, we'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion.
Second.
My Supervisor Garimendi, and supervisor, second by Supervisor Follendorf. Just to make clear, can you clarify what your motion is, Jack? Supervisor Follendorf, can you clarify? Supervisor Garimendi?
Sorry.
Motion is to make Supervisor Stoffer primary, and Supervisor Huberty for this meeting, the alternate.
Okay.
Sorry. Further clarification, though, Supervisor Stoffer will be primary, Supervisor Follendorf will be secondary with Supervisor Huberty as the alternate, second alternate.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by zero. It's a little confusing, I know.
It's okay, Ben's going to be there.
It's all downhill from here. We'll move on to item number 19. It's an informational item from Public Works, to receive a presentation from the Department of Public Works on its five-year strategic plan. Mr. Pakenger?
Good morning.
You need a couple minutes to set up?
Good morning. I'm hoping this is a brief presentation of our, of the Public Works strategic plan. We'll see how this goes. Thank you. The purpose of the presentation, I'll discuss briefly the history of strategic planning. It's kind of interesting, interesting to me, because I've been involved with it for quite a number of years, and we'll discuss where we're going with the strategic plan going forward. So the strategic plan that we have currently in place is one that was prepared by Josh Pack, the previous Public Works Director, and he collaborated with various members within the Department of Public Works who put this together. But strategic planning has actually started way back, I would say, somewhere around 2005, 2006, when Rob Holton was Director of Public Works. We spent quite a bit of time preparing the vision statement. We'll see that here in a moment. This strategic planning effort back in 2005, 2006 was necessary, because at the time, we had development services heavy focus. There was a lot of development going on in the county, large subdivisions were going on, and most of our resources, in terms of office resources, were spent reviewing plans, preparing conditions of approval for projects, just a lot of work processing projects. It was very difficult at that time to plan for taking care of our own infrastructure. There was... There was the usual maintenance that was occurring, but there was, it was very hard to plan to make bridge replacements or any large project. So during that time, I would say perhaps one bridge in maybe a few-year period of time might be developed. One person was handling the capital improvement program at the time. So we realized that we needed to do something to take care of our own infrastructure. And one thing that we tried at that time was to start focusing on our own needs. And that led us to try to develop the strategic plan effort. So this is way back when. Even though we started way, you know, quite a number of years ago, there were various impediments that kept us to completing a pretty good document. And that had to do with a lot of change in personnel. We went through quite a number of different Public Works Directors, but we also faced various disasters that you all know were, what happened there. So that Public Works core mission was not clear. We, we ended up doing quite a number of different jobs. At one point, we had integrated ways, transit and so forth. So anything that there was a need to work on or take care of, it was given to Public Works because we didn't know how to say no. And our core mission was greatly diluted. That eventually changed. We were able to refocus our efforts on the core mission. So let me read to you the vision statement, something that I'm proud of, is something that we developed way back 2005, 2006 timeframe. I remember working hard on this, trying to get the right words. It's, it's almost like, in my own mind, the way I think of it, it's, it's poetry. When you write a poem, every word in the line has meaning. That, that's how we chose, how we worked on this vision statement. Every word there has meaning to us, and let me read that to you. As stewards of the public interest, we build and maintain safe and efficient public infrastructure while protecting natural resources in partnership with our community. Every aspect of that vision statement is something that we practice. And in some areas, as, as you may know, the practice is something that we almost have no choice because, for example, we have to have permits for doing a lot of our work. And those permits are to ensure that we are protecting the natural resources. So that's the vision. Mission, we try to keep something kind of simple, providing reliable infrastructure with dedication and excellence. That's the mission. Our core values, again, we try to use an acronym that we can remember, not like the ones that Caltrans has, it's, that's alphabet soup there, but here with this one, it's respect. And we, let me focus in on, you know, for respect, we have resourceful, effective, the safety, positive, empathy, commitment and teamwork. But let me, let me focus on one item more, positive, that can do attitude. It's something that we work to make sure it permeates the organization down, it, it comes from our frontline personnel. Those are our people answering the phones and taking in the applications, interfacing with the public, all the way to our road crews that are out in the field, performing the work. And of course, the public sees them very much doing the work. Our inspectors have a lot of experience in helping the public. You, as the supervisors generally hear when our inspectors are, well, when there's a difficulty between a resident and our inspectors, when our inspectors have to enforce the codes, we're not allowed to read the codes. What you don't hear often is how much the inspectors have worked with some of these resident, residents so that they can, can come into compliance. We work with them to give them, well, there's, there's a limited amount of, of advice that we could give them, but we do tell them where they can turn to. We have our manuals that help them put together the plan. For the most part, we don't require engineers to do the work. A resident can do the work. Do better with that, perhaps giving samples or something like that. But in some cases, of course, there's engineers that have to do the work when it becomes a complex project. So when there's a water crossing or something, there's hydrology and hydraulics, engineers have to do, do the work. But for the most part, our inspectors try to work with the residents so that the work is within their reach and it's not, it's not something that's impossible for them to do. What we're interested in is protecting the property boundaries, protecting the roadway, protecting the waterways. If we can accomplish that with our work with the residents, then, then we're done, we're good. So this, we, back in 2000, in 2028, 2009, the SWOT analysis was performed by Josh Pack and the group. And these were the strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats that were found at the time. It hasn't changed in the years that I've been here. The threats and the opportunities and so forth are pretty much the same. One thing that we didn't plan for, we could foresee at the time was a pandemic and how that would affect our operation. It was a positive and negative effect to us. I guess it, you could say that to all of the organizations. We adapted and found different ways to conduct our business, found new ways to communicate with the public. But that's, for the most part, these are the, the issues that we face. A lack of increased revenue, increased costs, those types of things. That's the same thing that's been, the same story for years and years and years in an organization like ours. So we have some goals to keep us focused, to keep us going in, in the right direction, something that we review always. This is not something that's just sitting on a, somewhere collecting dust. When the county embarked on the strategic plan effort countywide, I provided this document to Robert Bendorf, and we discussed various things, making sure that our plan was consistent with, in line with the county's strategic plan. And was, it was, it's almost maybe a little subset of the county's strategic plan, something that fits just with our organization. So the, the strategic goal one, well, we, we kind of know where our, our goals are to keep us focused on the core mission of the department. And then, so let me start speaking a little bit about what are our goals. So here's our first one. It's, the objective is to enhance the quality of life by implementing proactive programs to improve roads and county infrastructure. This is something that we must always be paying attention to because our funding is very limited. We have to work very smart with the limited funding. We have to be able to stretch our dollars. And we're looking at always new funding opportunities. So you may remember, just recently, we received the Act of Transportation Grant Award, that's $9 million. There's a Clean California grant that we just received in the last, what, two, three weeks. We'll be coming to the board with a resolution for that one. That's $975,000. And that project is completing some of the lighting in the Murphy's Park area, amongst other, other items there. Our bridge work for the, is grant funded, so, and we continue to look for grant funding opportunities. That's what helps us deliver the larger value items. We, we seek to implement new technologies and innovations to maximize functionality, functionality while improving efficiency. So we're always, technology is, as you know, always changing, but there's new tools that come to us. One of the newest tools that we have that allows us to collect efficiently input from the public and provide feedback is the Mike Calaveras Service Request System. That system is consistently monitored. The road maintenance crews use that to keep a track of where issues are. And of course, we use that also to provide input for some of the larger projects. Although, when, when a resident asks for a road like Sheep Ranch or Skunk Ranch to be paved, funds are limited and it's difficult to, to address some of those desires. I'm hoping that we can work to make our webpage a little bit more robust so that we could give a little bit better information to the residents in regards to what they can expect when they use the Mike Calaveras County System. Because in some cases, we can't deliver on a specific request that they have. It just may not be possible at the time. Okay. Well, one, one thing I didn't mention on that last item is that we work in partnership with the Council of Governments. They have their own CIP tracking system that we have been able to also use. We're populating our projects into their system so that you can see where we're at with the projects and the project expenditures, and it communicates a little bit more information to the public. We have internally the track it system that the Building Department has been implementing. We're interfaced with that system to keep a track of all of the permit, all the permits that are coming in, grading permits, encroachment permits. And of course, we review the building permits with the Building Department. Building is trying to enhance that system and get into a computerized planned review system, and we'll be a part of that also. Internally, just with our own group, we are trying to use the Teams program a little bit more efficiently. We're also using a, a Microsoft OneNote to keep track of different tasks. That's just an internal little system that we have, it's being rolled out. You may see I still use pencil and paper, but that may be, you know, with me at my age, that's just, it's easier for me to do that. But I will try to learn these new programs and, you know, OneNote, see how we can do that too, but I don't lose my papers this way. Provider renewed, this is goal three. Provider renewed focus on systemic road safety projects designed to improve public safety to, and reduce collisions on county maintained roadways. This is what we hope to accomplish with all of our projects, is to reduce accidents. Caltrans is on a mission to reduce to zero accidents and fatalities. And we are in step with, with those efforts. There is funding from the state and the federal government to help us deliver those kinds of projects. And we have received funding, for example, we're working on the Road Safety Sign Audit, RSSA, that you may have seen already. There's the High Friction Surface Treatment Project, there's thermos plastic striping that we're going to be doing, there's guardrail upgrades. And we've presented at various times, contract awards or co-op agreements to the board, and we'll continue to do that, you'll see some of that work. You see, you will also see that within our CIP that we present on a yearly. We, there's a, a, an action item there to develop and maintain local road safety plan. We have our office, Janella submitted a, a grant application through the Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning Grant to develop the new action plan. Once that plan is developed, we can use that for funding projects. That's the way projects are funded, they all have to come from a grant, from a plan first. COG helps us quite a bit with the planning, the, the planning documents. But in this case, we have this one planning document that we hope to complete, and then from there, we can have projects funded. Okay, one point. Okay, now we'll go to a strategic goal number two, this is the internal efforts that we have within our, our own organization. So we are always working on training and trying to develop our staff, promoting them when, you know, as, as they gain experience and, experience and so forth. We are, we ask staff to participate in their growth. They let us know if there's opportunities that they see. We have currently, our fiscal staff is in CANS training, so there's a lot of fiscal knowledge that they have to have, working in various systems. Our own staff have specified training and they gain their certificates. Because we operate the county stormwater program, we have our own qualified stormwater personnel, they have their certificates. I have my certificate as a licensed engineer under that program. And we continue to look for other training opportunities. One easy training opportunity, opportunity that we have that's within reach is the Target Solutions that's now available to all in the county. I believe it's done through HR, but the various classes that we have there. Yes, so let's go to the next one. We have. Like I was saying, we have staff that have certificates and a lot of training with this kind of work that we do. We, we, there's always seminars that we go to, but we have to be careful on some of those that, you know, the, the funds are limited, so we need to get very good, very good training. We had a recent experience that was very strange. We sent some, some of our staff to a traffic type of training, and it was through UC Berkeley. And the discussion ended up being more with, in regards to equity and, and almost a different subject. So we need to be careful with that kind of thing to make sure that the training fits exactly what the personnel are working on. And so sometimes that's a little difficult, but where we can get free training, there's pavement type of knowledge that we need, ensuring that we know what's causing pavement damage. There are private companies that want to sell us things, so we could take advantage of some of their offers, and they offered free train- of some of their offers, and they offer free training, so that's what we look for. Okay. Okay, encourage employee recognition. This is something that was started a few years ago. What we have is a little program where we send a survey to all of our employees. There are different categories that they respond to within the, within the survey. Employee of the Year, Most Enthusiastic Employee, Rookie of the Year, so forth and so on. And what's interesting to read are the comments within the survey because they like to write down what they think about their peers, and we collect them, and it's good input. They care about each other quite a bit. So, last year, we had, for the Employee of the Year, a tie. There was between Matt Rogow, who works in our, in maintenance, in our road crews, and Mark Kanzalak, who works in our, with the Financial Business Administrator. We had, for the team, it was the Equipment Service Center. The Supervisor of the Year last year was Johnny Meyer. And the most dedicated employee last year was Troy Smith. So, we're going to get our surveys out again here in the next couple of weeks. We're going to do our awards again. We're presenting at our luncheon in December. We recently had a little lunch to thank and recognize our workers for the hard work that they endured during this last year's snow season. It was a little late, but it was, we'd just been so busy, but we finally did it, and they were thankful for that. And Supervisor Hubbard, he was able to thank the group for that. A few years ago, Supervisor Stopper's last act as chair was to thank the Road Department for all of the efforts that they had, and he was able to go to all the yards to thank them personally. And I welcome you and encourage you and greatly appreciate you to come and come with me, and we'll go and meet with the crews, and they do appreciate hearing from you those words In our, this has to do with safety. We have centralized procurement of safety, the PPE, all safety type of things. Emma Bell, I believe you've all met her. She's in our office, making sure that things are running smoothly in terms of safety. Our road crews have responded well to her. They listen to her suggestions, and we hope to keep a very close eye on this so that there are no safety issues. That's an important thing. Now, communications and relationships. We are continuously trying to develop better relationships with everyone. We are trying to implement this year a tool, the Teams, for our snow removal efforts. We'll see how we do with that, in addition to our regular communication efforts that we always have. Social media is not my thing, but we have a person that is an expert under contract to take care of those things. Because if it were left up to me, it's, I just don't think about those items. But we have someone that, you know, that has that expertise, and we feed them all of the information in regards to press releases and try to get the word out to them. We have established meetings with our local utilities. They impact our roads tremendously. That communication, sure, we're communicating, but it's still difficult sometimes to get them, get them to perform. We've, that's a topic for another day, of course, but we are meeting with Calaveras County Water District almost on a, by every other week or so, a couple times a month, because some of their projects, some of the very large projects, are going to be impacting the work that we're planning to do in the coming year. We also attend utility coordination meetings. We have a yearly snow meeting. We had it yesterday. I believe it was well-attended with PG&E, various utilities, AT&amp;T, the Fire Department, our OES Division was there, Supervisor Hubbard, he was there. A lot of communication with us and amongst each other, trading phone numbers and contact, and just freshening up who it is that we need to speak with, getting our protocols kind of nice and straight so that we're ready at least for the, as much as we can for the coming snow season. Communication relationship. So, we, I've mentioned previously that our positive attitude is something that permeates the organization. We try really hard to work with the public. I've been working with the public long enough to understand that the question that they really want answered is something that they don't even know how to ask. They don't know where to begin to ask some of these questions. So, I try to get our staff to work with them. It takes, it's, it's simple to, well, someone from the public just comes and asks for an application, and we can give it to them. They may not even need that application. That's not the thing that they're looking for, but they don't know where to begin. So, we need to have some dialogue with them to try to figure out a little bit more what it is that they need, and we try to help them. Ultimately, it's understood, we cannot waive the codes, but we need to, we know that we need to work with them. In some cases, some things are severe. In other cases, some things are not so severe, and we can accept maybe less than, less, less of a plan as, you know, not, doesn't have to be, everything doesn't have to be engineered. So, there's a hierarchy of importance there with items that we work with. So, we're, part of this plan, as you know, with strategic planning, something that, it could easily be something that can sit on the shelf and no one looks at it, or it's something that we're constantly looking at and working with and improving. We, not that we're reading this document every day, but there are many elements here that we're working on continuously, and this is one that we need to always be in communication with our groups. I've met with our road crews, our road superintendent, our foreman, in regards to getting this a little bit better. This is an area that we can do better. Our guys are used to going out there, doing the hard work, and going on to the next item, taking care of that, and going on to the next item. But you are not knowing what some of those items are that we're working on. We just, there was an intersection, that Watertown and Camposeco, that was just improved. But you don't know that, or I say improved, it needed maintenance. Our crews were out there and they fixed that road, but you have not heard that that was done. So, that's where I'm trying to get that feedback to you in, better, to get that information from them and send that to you, so you're aware of some of the work that's happening out there. We still use, of course, the Mike Calaveras, and it's a good system, but we are trying to get some of that information down to you. We hope this year, well, incoming year, this is the end of 2023 almost, but incoming year to work on our website to provide a little bit more information to the folks regarding what we can and can't do, and various pieces of information so that they have an understanding of what they can expect from us. So, of course, in the year, we continue to focus on the residents, and you are that conduit in regards to what the residents wishes. So, continue to be that conduit, please, to me and my staff. And we continue then to work on those items and try to provide you that feedback loop that's needed. So, we will, the organization has changed, let's go to the next one then. The organization has changed throughout the years. Like I said in the beginning, we were tremendously focused on development services. The, the organization reflected that. We didn't have much of a financial arm or anything like that. Now, we're in the business of delivering projects. The organization is completely different in that regard. We have a lot of work that we need to do, interfaces with Caltrans and systems that we need to implement in that regard. And so, that, that, we'll see in the future how that, how that transforms your organization. I don't see any immediately, immediate transformation. Our organization is working fine. There is one division that I'm going to implement that's new, but it's something that we need. It's a, it's a traffic division. I call it a division, but it's a, you know, maybe one or two people. I'm envisioning right now two people because the amount of work that's needed. This division will handle the speed surveys that are needed, that you request, moving that trailer around, looking at traffic control devices and so forth and so on. So, when I can get that staffed appropriately, we'll be able to deliver some of those items. And that in turn helps with the other items in our strategic plan, which speak about safety of the traveling public. So, it's all kind of tied together. Here we have our work that we do with our partner county departments. We work very closely with the, our financial group, our auditor. There's, there's always constant interface with them. We have computer systems that we have. And so, we also have to have a road fund audit where the state comes and looks at every penny that we spend. We can't spend a single penny on something that's not in the county-maintained road system when it comes to those road dollars. So, we, we continue to work on the CIP, and we'll be presenting those to you on an annual Now, this one here, you have, you have in me and in Mark Kanzalak, and with Kelly and others in my office, very frugal people. We don't like to spend too much money. We, we try to make sure that the dollars are spent wisely, and we watch everything. So, it's the only way that we can survive with the revenues that are pretty much stagnant, but the costs keep increasing. We're expecting the costing and salaries to go up, costing materials to go up. So, we're looking at ways to plan and better the use of materials, how we order materials, and so forth and so on. So, that's, that's ongoing. So, I could, I'm not going to read the whole thing there for you, but, but strategic planning is part of an effort that's started, you know, it's a subset of an effort that has kind of, I would say, ancient roots over a hundred years ago, when scientists were looking at manufacturing and making sure that the processes were efficient, as efficient as possible, and various companies took different approaches. Toyota is famous for its operational efficiencies, and there's a lot of stuff and a lot of science that's written behind this. It's really interesting stuff, a lot of stories there. But there's one thing that's come out that's kind of simple, almost as, you know, including the strategic plan at first, and that's Plan, Act, Do, Check. You may have heard about that. That's something that we practice pretty much daily. We're always doing our plans. We have to check that the plan works. If it works, we act on that. We keep checking. It's a feedback loop that's always working. And what I have to do is to make sure that I communicate back to you in that feedback loop, the feedback communication. Okay? So, so, thank you for, I was hoping this would be short, but you gave me the microphone, and what can I do?
Are there any questions? Supervisor Garmenda, your light's on on your microphone. Supervisor Hubbard? Supervisor Stopper?
Actively pursuing grants. The nine-million-dollar grant, where was that from?
The Active Transportation Program.
Okay, from the ATT. That, that's correct. I just want to clarify that. We were talking about stretching the dollar because it seems like we don't, aren't getting more money in, but yes, costs are going up. Four years ago, we, as a board, had before us, you know, our capital improvement plan and how we're going to move forward, like the five-year.
Right.
And consolidating work in given areas so that we aren't, you know, we're, one for contracting, it's cheaper contracts, bringing in people, so they aren't moving equipment back and forth, extreme cost on equipment. It seems a lot of times we've fallen away from that because of one issue or another, and it's not nearly as reflected on the capital improvement plan moving forward as it was four years ago. And moving forward, I would like to see that come back together because it makes sense on stretching the dollar.
Yes, sir.
You talked about providing information to elected officials. We used to get a quarterly report, maybe doing something like that again, and so moving away from it would keep us more in the light. Fill employees. I did attend that when I was chair, and it's, it's just from my perspective as one, a fact. These guys are working out in the heat of the summer. That's when we get our best pavement put down. And, and it's a hundred degrees, and they're pulling asphalt out of trucks at two-seventy degrees Fahrenheit. I mean, extreme conditions at the same time in the middle of the winter. They're laying down blades in the past to clear snow or clearing culverts in the lower end of the county, and they're used to working in extreme conditions. We also had a presentation on compensation. I really think that it will show that these guys are doing some of the hardest work and getting the most done in public works out of anybody on the low end, or some of the least compensated overall and everything. And, you know, we really do need to show these guys their, the appreciation for what they do because for our resources, as you said, not much coming in as opposed to what's going out now on us. I mean, those guys go over and beyond.
Yes.
And they are appreciated.
Thank you.
Andy?
Yes, yes.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none? Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Kelly. And we will take a five-minute break before we move on to the next item.
We are back and we are here for items twenty-one and twenty. However, Department Head Gabriel, you have a comment on both of those?
Yeah, yeah. Chair of Penali, Supervisor, CEO and County Council. Upon consultation with the applicant on items twenty and twenty-one, we have decided to pull the item off the agenda so we can do some additional work on the CQ document.
So they will be coming back at a later date?
They will come back at a later date, yes.
So if everybody understands that, we are removing items twenty and twenty-one and they will be coming back on another meeting.
At another meeting. And item twenty-two is already off the calendar anyway. So we're done.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will move on to the supervisor announcements in compliance with Government Code 53232.3D. Board members shall provide a brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and it may make other announcements or reports out. Supervisor Hubbardey?
Thank you, Chair. Friday the thirteenth, I did an interview with Al. Thank you, Al. And on Thursday, the nineteenth, I toured the North Grove and the big trees prescribed burn that was done in the North Grove. And that all went to plan. On Monday, the twenty-third, as Robert was saying, I attended the winter storm warning meeting, which was brilliant. Really appreciate that being pulled together. There were, there had to have been forty people in the room, but exchanging those telephone numbers is, is huge for wintertime. I also attended later that day with Chair Toffanelli, the CSCSA meeting. I did want to address Tom Watson, who spoke at the public comment regarding sirens. I did bring that up again with the sheriff and with Chief Johnson from Emmett's Pass Fire. When we did the town halls this past summer, they didn't, or at least Chief Johnson didn't see the value in doing sirens. But Chief Johnson and Mike Massone are going to go to Swallowme and look at what they've got and see whether it'd be applicable for us. Oktoberfest was great. The cow pie social was great up in District Three. All the events that went on last weekend in Murphy's were fantastic. It was very controlled. And I did attend the San Andreas Main Street opening and that was pretty magical with the museum and getting a tour of downtown. Thank you.
Supervisor Stopper?
We have one more meeting prior to CSAT. I did attend the special meeting for ADCA on Friday. Two split meetings, one in Sonora, one in Jackson. Ms. Teresa was good enough to attend on the Sonora side while I was in Amador. I think there is some good conversation and, you know, I think we have an opportunity right now for us to maybe start working better together with our partners from both counties and some potential for more information and education on what the services are and how we can get to a point where we are comfortable with access for our constituents and the best services provided to our constituents. And I think that we'll see possibly something, a, what will we call it? ADCA will be doing a to the news, sorry, I lost my train of thought, but, you know, they'll be, they'll be doing a press release to the news media that's official here, here very soon. Is that good enough?
Supervisor Geramendi?
I attended the CTC meeting, which I'm sure my colleagues will report out on last week, Dan and Madera, a very successful outcome. That's what I'm required to report. I would like to ask, though, following up on that, that we receive a report from Public Works on how they're going to complete Wagon Trail Phase One. I'd like to also hear their financing plan for Phase Two. Seems like a reasonable next step and we should all be aware.
Is that it?
That's it.
Supervisor Follendorf?
Thank you. I attended the District Ten Caltrans Bike Advisory Committee. Supervisor Woodrow also attended as a lot of the topics related to the Highway Four corridor from Muggleyville all the way over to the City of Angels with multiple bike events that are going on from the Mr. Foggy Ride and Death Ride and things like that. So we, we had a good conversation with the stakeholders on a lot of those events for the 2024 year. Did also attend the CTC meeting in Madera last week on the eighteenth and nineteenth with Geramendi and the chairman, along with Melissa Raggio from the COG. And I just want to thank Caltrans, the COG, the city staff, especially those that not are just internal staff, but external staff such as Matt, that really helped us get this project to where it is today. And I just really appreciate the collaboration and it's been many years in the work. I will let you talk about the rest of it. And then this Thursday, I will be having a town hall on the final and third town hall on the copper community plan. And thanks to the planning department for putting that together and the community for coming out and participating. And then this Wednesday, I will be attending the community action agency workshop in Sonora. And I'm sure Friday's event will be talked about then as well. And that's all I got. Thank you.
I attended the San Andreas Main Street Open House event on Saturday. It was well run. It was very good. They've done a lot of work on Main Street, a lot of the business owners there. And it looked very good and it was well attended and it was well taken. It was a good thing. I'd like what's happening down there. Also attended the Central Sierra Child Support Agency meeting yesterday with Supervisor Hubbardey. And also attended last Wednesday and Thursday, the eighteenth and nineteenth, the CTC with Supervisor Follendorf, Supervisor Geramendi. It was a very good meeting from our standpoint. And I would like to thank everybody involved, like Supervisor Follendorf mentioned, the names of people that had been involved to get to where we were and actually get the item on the agenda for them was, was very, I don't want to say difficult, but we were in a very precarious place to be able to get on the October meeting agenda versus the December. And it was critical for us to be there and the teamwork that was provided got us there. And we waited until about the afternoon on the last day, the nineteenth, our item finally came up. And we were awarded fourteen million dollars to finish Phase One in Wagon Trail. And that was our request. So we fully got our full funding for the requests that we put in for it to finish it off. I want to thank again Caltrans, Dennis Agar and Caltrans at the state level and also Dennis Agar's Assistant Grace, along with Matt Seital, Supervisor Geramendi, Supervisor Follendorf and Melissa Raggio from COG and her staff. They were fully involved in trying to get this thing done. And it was a collaborative effort from all of us that ultimately rewarded us with the money to finish the Phase One. I'm in collaboration with Supervisor Geramendi and Follendorf. From here going forward, that we need to have, I would say, at least bi-monthly reports from Public Works on where we are on this project as we go forward, not only progressing to finish it, but also financially where we're at. So that we don't get in a situation that we were before. But I think from every indication from Caltrans and Dennis that the money that we were given and awarded was adequate to finish what we have going forward. And we will finish that hopefully sometime by this time next year, that Phase One will be completely done. And that's what we're going to be focusing on and making sure that we, is brought to the board that we are aware of where we are and what's going on and any difficulties or any things that come up between then and now that we're very well aware of and what our course is to get it completed and get it done. But very happy and very happy for everybody that was collaboratively involved in it to get it awarded fourteen million. And we were recognized by the vice chair. He, he announced Calaveras County and he made us stand up and he recognized all three supervisors from our county for being there for two days. And that's not something that happens very often at CTC. Congratulations to everybody. And that's my report. CEO Hitchcock, you have anything you would like to report?
So I would like to comment on the ADCA meeting that both Supervisor Stopper and I attended. I was very impressed with their board. I'd like to thank and commend them for listening to our concerns and then addressing those concerns on how services are provided in Calaveras by ADCA. So overall, it was a very positive meeting and their Board of Directors seems very dedicated to ensuring that Calaveras residents are able to access the services that they're supposed to access through ADCA. So it was a good meeting.
That's good to know. County Council, Sarah?
I don't have any updates.
Nothing to say?
No.
Clerk Stacy?
No.
Nothing to say? Happy Halloween, happy Hanukkah, anything like that? Sarah?
Susan?
I mean Susan, sorry, Susan? And I got to say, Susan was there on Saturday at the open house on Main Street and she was filming and she did a very good job.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see the film.
It'll be fun. So it was absolutely amazing. The kids were having such a good time, food and all kinds of activities.
Supervisor Stopper?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Geramendi, for all the work you do behind the scenes, you know? Really appreciate it.
Okay? Anything else? Not? We are adjourned.